Line up.
It's Mayor Pro Tim and.
All right, Council, call the meeting back to order. Item four one oh one, Councilman Dawkins, you have a suggestion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Community Police Advisory Board. The council has been presented the number of votes from the council members we do have.
Did you approve your agenda?
What happened? Is that current floor?
Right.
All right, so we'll call the meeting to order. Certainly had prayer and don't get too much of that. At prayer, item three point oh is approval of the agenda. Motion to approve?
Motion. Hold on just a minute, may I be taking some items off?
No, I think that.
Okay, okay.
We're going to be quick, I promise you.
All right, item three point oh is approval of the agenda. Is motion by Councilman Dawkins very second? By Councilmember Wright, maybe some more? All right, those in favor of approving agenda, show a hand. All right, Councilmember Emmer.
Green.
Mayor Pro Tim. Sit, you're done. All right, motion carried. Item four one oh one, Community Police Advisory Board, Councilman Dawkins.
I'd like, Mr. Mayor, like to make a consensus motion to approve the top nine vote getters from the city council member votes. And along with that, we decide and at a subsequent meeting, the one alternate. And the alternate names are Mr. Broadhore Hurst, Mr. Hare, Mr. Lowe. Is that Ari McMeedley?
Yeah, Ari.
Ari. So those are, we will vote on those four at a subsequent meeting.
I have a question.
Sir.
Mayor, you start it.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, when everyone asks the alternates and know that this was very close with some numbers. And I greatly appreciate the counting up by staff and how they itemized each council member's vote. But there's one person, and I don't know if I should speak on it and call their name. But because they had lost a family member that were part of a program, I really feel close about making that person the alternate since they did not get enough votes just to be straight out there. Because they're very, very involved in with this type of thing.
Yeah, and I agree.
And because we do also want citizens, of course, but citizens that have direct relationships like this one.
I just think you got to. Well, and I'm not disagreeing with you. I think the motion on nine was.
Right, right.
Gotcha. Get the ones that would be tabulated, but right now it's a motion without second, so it's very.
Second, sir.
All right. Motion second, discussion phase. I think the motion on the floor, just to recap that, was to get the nine. I think that number factors that as we pick the alternate, that we do need to probably fill a little time to discuss the strengths and weaknesses of those. And special circumstances, like you said, but the motion was to approve the nine. I made the decision on the alternate in an upcoming meeting, so. Been moving second, Councilmember Davis, here, of course.
Yeah, I sent an email today, Mr. Mayor. And I've been echoing this throughout the entire process. Maybe it doesn't matter for council. I just want to make sure I'm clear publicly when I'm saying this. And I don't know exactly what the numbers are, but I think we should be cognizant that we aren't putting sixty, fifty percent of the board, police officers, law enforcement, to be advisors to the police officers, law enforcement.
Right. Say that again, please, sir.
I think we need to be cognizant that we're not creating a citizens' police advisory board made of fifty percent police advisory background on law enforcement officials.
Was it, was it, is that the tabulation of?
I'm not sure.
Of the top vote getters?
I'm not sure, but I know two of the ones that I know who have no police affiliation are not included.
Yeah, I took that into consideration with people I recommend.
Yeah, I would. If staff could do me a favor and go through the back, because I want to.
Unless, it's in the proposal, this is motion on the floor, it has to be second discussion phase unless there is the will to just make sure we keep this right, to review that, to make sure it's balanced and diverse with different opinions and perspectives. Not heavy on one side or the other. Could you add it later for this time, I mean.
I mean, whatever pool of council is I'm down, I'll vote, you know, I just want to be clear.
It's us tabulating it, and now we're reading which tabulations are. We haven't discussed it or worked through certain special issue circumstances, so.
And I would get everything.
And the reason we proposed to do it tonight, I think, was just the fact that we could spend three and a half hours in another upcoming process, so. And certainly an opportunity, I go Councilmembers Kiston and someone else that I had, Councilman Hare.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Just like all of you, I went through the applications. And I saw the information that I saw, the details that I saw. I don't think you one hundred, I mean, that aligns one hundred percent, just at least with my, with the applicants that I chose, but that's from my, my perspective.
Councilmember, okay, Councilmember Kiston and Wright.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I know we had some discussion when I was asking about different categories that we could put them in. And I would say out of the ones that I did, I did end up with nine of consensus, basically, with what the other council members came up with and looking at those areas of concern. So I'm okay with the selection.
All right, Councilmember Wright, and Davis.
Yes, I just, I just have a question concerning tabulation of the numbers that per councilperson. Everyone didn't vote for ten people. So when everyone don't vote for ten people, and I don't know why, you throw the numbers off and they don't balance. So it becomes unfair that a person could have gotten picked based upon the numbers if they had all been voted for. So I have a problem with that because it really throws off the numbers when you look at the bottom line. Why they didn't put in all the votes, I don't know. But they're short, we're short three, we're short three votes from a councilperson. And I think we might need to relook at before we can come up with a balanced vote.
Five, I choose ten.
Right.
I reported on it, so choose ten.
So, Council, it is motion on the floor with a second. If you're made of those who sponsored this motion, Dawkins, Hare, motion.
Mr. Mast.
Yeah.
If the motion was to appoint the top nine vote getters and then appoint whoever was next as an alternate. If there's a council member who you would like to solicit to provide three more votes, then you could technically at Monday's meeting when you would appoint all nine, because you don't typically appoint people at your work session. You'd be able, may have a new vote. So if you wanted to have staff reach out to the council members, see if they had three more names that they wanted to provide or not, then you could still potentially appoint the top.
Well, certainly this is a suggestion, but I think two components of our purpose, one is improve off the calculation. If you're looking for thirty, you're not getting all the factor of twenty seven, because someone who received, you know, hey, we don't know if that could change it. You had ten names there. The other concern was to make sure it's the diversity of the council board. I don't know about you all, but I hadn't seen the total tabulation of everybody's stuff until spreadsheet. And hadn't, I, I couldn't look through and see how it would be paired up with the top nine or ten. So I think there are a couple of missing pieces to that that certainly, you know, we can do it right now, we can do it right.
Well, I can pull motion.
Yeah, I mean, and, and, you know, I think we want to get it right, this first board, we want to make sure we don't have any.
Respectfully, regardless.
Okay, sure. All right, so maybe this could be tabled to the upcoming meeting, if that's, Councilmember Black, you go.
Okay, because I was gonna ask, I know one person, I know Keats, Councilwoman Keats said she had one for the session, she chose nine. But for the other, I didn't count through them, but we, the motion made and we are voting to choose ten, so that's for each council member to choose.
Right. Right, and then there was one council member that said they wanted an appointment to be made by the twenty board that we made. So, yeah, we need, I guess we need to. Huh? Oh, okay, Councilman Kiston.
If from the reading is correct, we did have one council member that left three slots open.
You did, plus you had one that left, one.
And I had one for the session.
Five out of the questions.
Yes, yes, five.
So if there can be a motion tabled, it.
I'm gonna make a motion to table that's to the upcoming meeting, so we could clarify and break, rectify the numbers. So.
All right, motion by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Hare. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, let's do it.
Mayor, you speak.
You had a discussion?
Well, I was gonna ask if he can amend his motion and because we had enough time to choose, we all looked over, we all looked over applications, not thinking that the next meeting should be when we actually make the official.
Absolutely.
That's good. So you're gonna put a hay on the hay?
Which we made.
To the thirteen?
No, I'm thinking that council member who was chosen that came and should make, I mean, put in those five million people they have left on the same basis, you go ahead and, because we waited, it isn't worth it.
You have to go ahead and.
Yeah, so I'm excited about some money, because I mean, I think you're waiting.
Because you got three missing and one, one missing and two.
Okay, I would like to give before we send the email, I'm just having a moment, we have to officially vote for Monday.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So as a motion, I think, made a motion to reflect the table is to the thirteenth, the meeting of thirteenth, which is next Monday. And we will reach out to Mayor Pro Tim and to Councilman Kiston, of course, and Jenson and Emmer to, to fill the ten as council.
Can I say this to the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me.
Oh, hold on, I'll go to you in just a moment, ma'am.
Because of the importance of the board, I think the way we are doing it now without having discussion on the final ten is it will be probably premature and it may be detrimental to the effectiveness of what we're trying to accomplish. I think even though we voted for our ten and we calculated the highest numbers of vote getters, I think there's still some discussion that may need to be had based upon the diversity of this board and this board should reflect the community in which we live. And then the other question is like, what council member Davis brought up. All of these need to be discussed as to how effective this board is going to be as we sit these people because it's historical and it's very important that we get this right.
Okay, well, let's sure.
So I'm saying even on Monday, as we discuss and come up with those numbers, I think there need to be a discussion prior to the vote to ensure that. It'll need to take time to go through these names and to see if we can get a balance of diversity on here and that we don't, you know, shoot ourselves in the foot by pushing it through a little bit too quick.
Now, this is something to consider if next Tuesday.
Excuse me.
Swearing, okay, I'm coming, help me. Next Tuesday, you discuss the previous meeting, swearing in, want to set aside some time to do what you're saying.
I think that's important enough to do, get some.
Okay, all right, Councilman Emmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to, I just want to clearly state, my selections are as is and I don't plan on changing it. For the alternate, just so it can go on record, in my email with the nine that I selected, I stated, which will speak to the diversity that Ms. Councilmember Wright is speaking to. I stated as an alternate that there might be a recommendation for a member of the millennial commission or demographic be solicited for this thing, but from what I'm hearing, it may be best for us to vote to put this out again for applicants because just, just speaking, those that applied, those were the ones who wanted to serve. And I don't know if we didn't have a good window, from my understanding, we had a pretty good window of time where people could apply. But if the, the people that applied wanted to serve, they applied and they met the deadline. So what I'm hearing is altogether, we just may need to say, we, we, we're just gonna put this, put this out to solicit more applicants. But as far as my selections, they're as is, so staff has no reason to reach out to me to gain any other names.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, I have a motion on the floor, seconded by Councilmember Hare.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Motion was to table, said item until next Tuesday. We still were asking council members to do what the council agreed that we'd do, was to give ten names. If you do not do that, that's, that's your problem. And so that's a motion that's on the floor. Any further discussion? All right, Council, let's do it before you vote for the motion. All right, those voting in favor, Councilman Davis, Dawkins, Wright, Coven, Hare, Kiston, Councilmember Emmer.
Green.
And Councilmember Banks, McLaughlin. All right, so those voted opposed, Councilmember Banks, McLaughlin, we'll have that ready. Madam Clerk, please still send out a request to all of the council for ten names. All right, and have that posted soon as you can. Item four one oh two, Watershed Master Plan, status updated, first tranche of projects.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Sheila Tomasamba comes up, Sheila and Byron Reeves, they'll also introduce another staff member they have here with us. Thank you for, I know it's the hours growing late, but one of the big priorities of this council over the last two years was advancing the infrastructure needs across the city, including taking a focus on comprehensively on stormwater. And so the council has made an ambitious plan to do a three-year window for us to have a stormwater master plan. And this is a continuation that we have promised to bring you the first tranche of projects this calendar year. And we will try to be brief, but because of the significance of this, we would ask that y'all allow some time for staff to work through it. This potentially could end up being a twelve million dollar ask in the first grouping here. And I will turn it over to Sheila and Byron. It's here, Sheila, would you stick over?
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. We're here today to talk to you about the Watershed Master Plan program, to give you a status update and the first tranche of projects. Agenda today will cover four subjects, background and process, specific projects from the first round of studies, our specific council request, and the next steps and success stories. For the background and process, as a reminder, of this whole year nineteen, twenty nineteen, city council authorized a fee increase and directed staff to accelerate its watershed study program and related capital project program to help control stormwater runoff, reduce localized minor flooding, and improve our resiliency to major problems. Today, we'll provide you a status update on Beaver Creek Three, Little Cross Creek, Cape Fear Two East, Cape Fear Two West, and Rockfish Creek, and our first batch of recommended projects. We also have you a condensed timeline for you, which highlights where we are in the process. We expect to come back to you with more results and projects in March twenty twenty-two, May twenty twenty-three, and May twenty twenty-four. Before I present any further, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the team that has brought this together. At the center of this team is Fayetteville, you at council, our community, our city manager's office. What you have today is truly a mark of teamwork. With the city of Fayetteville team driving the vision, our program manager, Friesen Nichols, driving the technical details and quality assurance, and over nine consultants, our seven consulting firms, all listed here, working in concert to provide to this community a one of a kind. The public services department could not have achieved what we have here today without the talent and commitment from our staff. Alicia Lanier, the program manager for the program, Byron Reeves, our interim public services director, Andrew Ralph, and Ali Shalal, and Mike Watts from the Friesen Nichols team and his team, Ed Dixon and Morgan McWay. To this entire team, I am truly grateful. So this is the map we brought to council in January of twenty twenty. Council allocated about thirteen and a half million dollars to study the entire city. Since thirteen and a mo, thirteen and a half million dollars was not enough, we had to determine which areas were to be studied. We completed a high-level analysis, which included studying flooded roads, emergency facilities, disconnected structures, and structures rated in the form of a structure. And from studying those four priority areas, we were able to determine what you see in yellow are the areas that we want to allocate the thirteen and a half million dollars. So this is what we've been working on since our last council debate. What we have here today are the results from four watersheds, Beaver Creek One, Little Cross Creek, Rockfish Creek, and Cape Fear Two. I will note that we will be presenting the results to you for all but for Cape Fear Two. It's all, including Cape Fear Two, except Locks Creek, which is shown in Free Shore all the way to the southeast. Staff would like to come back to the counseling in the January work session to present results of Locks Creek and to speak in detail of the solutions related to Cape Fear Two East. Preliminary, we have evaluated multiple options for Locks Creek to include a bridge and widening of the creek, a levee, a large pond, and we're showing very low efficacy. We think we need some dedicated time to discuss Locks Creek with this council. We also plan to bring to you Locks Creek in March of twenty twenty-two. So we've done four watersheds and we plan to bring you a fifth watershed in March of twenty twenty-two. Before we get started, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna talk a little bit about some concepts. So what is a watershed study? A watershed study is a computer software that simulates rainfall, runoff, flow for various storm events to predict the extent of roadway, pipe, creek, and river water levels and flooding, and to test ways to reduce the flooding while actually constructing the projects. So what is a storm event? It's better described in a form of example. A ten-year storm event has a ten percent chance of happening in any given year. A twenty-five-year storm event has a four percent chance of happening in any given year. And storm events are defined by the amount of rainfall for a given duration. And level of service, level of service for flooding is defined as the largest storm event that can be safely conveyed by the stormwater asset or system in consideration. So for example, if you have five point five inches of rain in twenty-four hours, it is considered a ten-year event. But by the same token, if you have five point oh seven inches of rain in three hours, that is considered a hundred-year event.
Wow. Well, was it too much information for you to download to our laptops?
It is in your laptop.
No, so.
I can see it.
It is not. There was a technical error with my computer during that point in time when we were trying to load it, but we will get it to you.
Thank you.
So the process we used were five steps. We define the minimum level of service for assets and locations. We prioritize areas that do not meet that level of service. We developed potential solutions for those prioritized areas. We determined the efficacy of the solutions to fix that level, those level of service issues. And then we prioritize and propose potential projects based on the budget and resources. So let's talk about level service, just hang with me for a little bit, because this is going to be important for the rest of the discussion. What you see in solid green are existing levels of service for the city. Patched in our new levels of service we established for this analysis. So post two thousand and nine, our city streets have been designed to meet a ten-year level of service. But as you know, most of our city was developed prior to two thousand and nine. So our process involved understanding to what extent the road or the bridge or the carvert does not meet the level of service for flooding as shown here in the table, prioritize that and develop solutions. So what you can see here are some additional levels of service that we incorporated into this analysis. For example, for SAG locations, which are the low point in the road, we have determined a twenty-five-year level of service. For disconnected structures, which is single-axis neighborhoods, one axis in and one axis out, we determined a fifty-year level of service. And then for our emergency facilities, we determined a hundred-year level of service. So in summary, this exhibit is, the concept of this exhibit is that the level of service, we design solutions to meet a level of service. And so here is a map of Little Cross Creek. The map on the left and the right are the same. What you see in olive green are all the areas we identified to study via the previous, previous high-level analysis that I talked about. We then performed a modeling and refined areas further and prioritized them as concern areas, which you can see in green, yellow, and pink. We then developed solutions for most of the high and medium concern areas, which are shown in green and yellow, and some low-concern areas. And the solutions are shown as red dots. So this gives you a summary of what happened for Little Cross Creek. So here are a couple exhibits at various zoom levels. The left exhibit is a Little Cross Creek watershed. We show you a specific area that we prioritize as a high-concern area. The zoomed-in view of that area is shown on the upper right-hand corner. And finally, the lower right shows you what a model output looks like, and I will speak to this in a little bit. So here, in this one, this is an example of a model output. The white exhibit, the, the left exhibit is the before scenario, and the white exhibit is the after scenario. The legend on the right, far right, shows you the various storm events and the levels of service. On the map to the left, you will see Leon Road flooding for approximately twenty-seven hundred feet for a ten-year storm event, i.e. it does not meet a ten-year level of service. You will also see some flooding on Chester Road. You can also see several linear feet of pipe showing red that do not meet the ten-year level of service. The solution for this project is upsizing pipes, which we have shown in black dots to the white exhibit. This fixes, as you can see on the white exhibit, all roadway flooding. And although not the focus of the solution, the auxiliary benefit is that several structures in the area are now at a higher level of service. Our focus was to seek to fix the issues in the public right of way, as these are the areas that have the highest public benefit and is the city's full responsibility. However, many of our solutions resulted in auxiliary benefits of increasing the level of service for the private structures. So I want you to again take a look at the left map, which is the before. Post our solution is the white map, which has practically fixed all of the issues for the left map and given you some additional benefits of removing several structures on the southwest to a higher level of service. And so we went through this process of looking air, at area by area. And what you can see here is in the yellow is the existing conditions where we evaluated how many linear feet of roadway was flooded, how many structures were compromised as single-axis areas, or how many structures were compromised. And post our project, we evaluated the same situation, and that's what you see on green. And you can see that Leon Road capacity expansion results in a hundred percent efficacy. So here is the summary of everything. This is our capstone map, and it summarizes study aspects for each watershed. So what you can see here is that we studied, we had eighty-three concerned areas. Thirty-seven of those eighty-three were selected for further project development. We developed forty-one proposed solutions. What this shows you is that we identified about six point six miles of roadway flooding. And if we do all the projects in Little Cross Creek, we would have resolved three point three miles. We had identified around twelve traverse water crossing risks. If we did all the projects shown here, we resolved eight. And we had 38 disconnected structures. And if we did the projects, we'd have resolved 24. We also had the augmented benefit of resolving and increasing the level of service for 44 structures for the 10-year, 72 for the 25, and 70 for the 50-year. The total cost of all these projects is $57.8 million. And that is the summary for Little Cross Creek. We go through every watershed in this report map.
Just want to back, I didn't want to take the question because, you know, there's a lot of numbers to digest. Councilman Wright, in there, before you move on to the next.
You made a comment that the solution for the red dots, but you didn't go ahead and just say, give us a little bit of information on the solution. So what do those red dots represent?
Right. So we, so those were where we had developed proposed solutions. We're going to talk about, and then we prioritize them, which developed proposed solutions and we prioritize them. The next part of this will be Byron actually talking to you about the ten that we're proposing to council and the details on those.
So actually no work has been done yet, just analyzing of the work and what the results would be.
That's correct.
Which you told us tonight.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So here's a capstone for Beaver Creek. As you can see, 39 concerned areas, 23 were selected, we had 23 proposed solutions. We identified 4.7 miles of roadway flooding. We resolved 4.1 via the modeling analysis. This is all a theoretical model that helps us understand before you actually build the project, what efficacy you're going to get. We identified 33 traverse road crossings. We are resolving 23 if we do all those projects. 10 disconnected structures, we're resolving eight. And likewise, we show you impacted structures that we have an augment benefit. This is the same for Cape Fear West. We had 32 concern areas, 19 was selected, 15 proposed solutions. And we identified nine miles of roadway flooding, we resolved six. 34 traverse road crossings, we resolved 12. We had no disconnected structures in this particular area. And we resolved, we increased the level of service for 10, for 10 structures in the 10, 25 in the 25, and 28 in the 50. This entire suite of projects will cost us $28 million. And finally, we have Cape Fear East. As we noted before, this provides you the package of solutions for all but Locks Creek. We identified 16 concerned areas. 14 were selected for further development of solutions. We have 6.5 miles of impacted roadway. This does not include Locks Creek. With the problems with the menu of solutions provided for Locks Creek, we're only resolving 1.1. We have 37 roadway crossings, we're resolving 10 disconnected structures. We have 251, we're resolving zero. That's because this does not include Locks Creek. And we have resolved two, we have increased the level of service for two, five, and eight structures for the various storm events. The total cost of this minus Locks Creek is $26 million. And finally, we have the last one, which was Little Rockfish Creek, which was Rockfish Creek that actually did not move to, was not considered a high-concern area. We actually did not develop any proposed solutions because it did not advance high enough as being a concerned area. So with that, before I go on and present the second part of the project to Byron, I want to talk a little bit about process.
Well, we have, we have a question.
Yes.
Councilor here.
And I think, Mayor, I'm going to step back because you, you may be going directly where I'm thinking. I was hoping I could pull this up on the city website, but it's not there either. Little Cross Creek, which I have some questions about, that's in the Utah Shopping Center area. When you say the Utah Creek watershed, is that the same off of Kane Road? That pond of water there that goes, I'm not sure where it runs to. I guess, I was thinking it ran all the way to the Little Cross Creek.
I'm not sure on the exact area that you're talking about.
It is. When you.
Line Road and Rogers.
Right, when you say Little Cross Creek in the Utah, unless there's another.
You're correct, sir.
Okay, so I'm correct. And those are what, those are the questions that I want to ask, but I can wait till you do that, too.
Okay.
If that's the same location I'm speaking of.
Tampa Road, Kane Road.
Okay. I'll wait.
So before we head off over to Byron, I just want to talk about, so we developed four manuals for this process. One was a CMSM. It's a 200-page report that provides guidance by documenting technical standards and policies and consistent processes for how a watershed study will be studied. It touches upon scope, schedule, budget, reporting, documentation, communication, and standard technical development of the watershed study. At the city's request, staff also worked with the program manager to develop a pilot study to grant truth for CMSM concepts. And then the city, in conjunction with Radiance, developed a stormwater incentives for economic development report. This report, researchers and documents weigh its missed values have found to provide incentives that help drive desired development while simultaneously addressing pretty funny issues. The city also developed a companion map package and a map report that compiles information in one place that identifies areas, all locations with current planned or anticipated improvements of projects from across the spectrum of commercial and public investments known to public services staff. So we gave all this information to the consultants to help them understand when they need a solution, that they need to understand that they're competing, they're competing things going on in that area. And if they are, to incorporate the solutions to account for that. So our work from a development of solutions perspective is 90% complete. Staff and the program management team are currently finalizing the report and vetting all the data one more time. And we will see the final reports in March. In the meantime, as promised, we're bringing you the first tranche of proposed projects. The solutions and efficacies of these projects should not change. The staff would like to start surveying and designing. With that, I'll turn to Byron and come back to you, PM.
And council, it is loaded now in your, in your agenda.
All right, I did have a question about efficacy. Explain that a little bit. So $28 million, $27 million Cape Fear East with 6.8% efficacy, what does that mean?
Right, so as you noticed, and most of the projects that we are presenting to you and most of the projects in general were able to attain a high efficacy. We were able to actually find solutions for them. The Cape Fear East is a unique area, which is why we're coming back to you in the January web session to discuss the unique challenges we had in attaining that efficacy.
So you would only, it would only be 6.8% effective with this solution?
Right, I was giving you the example of how low the efficacy was for the Cape Fear East. Because we came up with a menu of options. We came up with the levee option, we came up with a large pond option, we came up with a major bridge option. And many of those options were scoring at a low efficacy. So we'd like to come back and provide you a dedicated session to discuss Cape Fear East.
All right, sir. So to go into detail with the projects. So we prioritize these proposed solutions. So how did we bring to you this first group of projects? First of all, we were trying to target around $20 million in total project cost. So that survey design all the way through to construction. So we were targeting $20 million to bring towards you. We then ranked it based off of the concern areas, so kind of the worst to first. So if it was the highest-ranked concern area, that would have been one of the higher-ranked proposed solutions. We then also based it off of the efficacy. So was there a practical solution based off the funding we were trying, the target we were trying to meet? As Sheila mentioned, there was low efficacies for some. Some, no matter how big of a pipe you put in the ground, you're not going to be able to solve the problem. We then targeted an equitable distribution between the watersheds. So what I mean by that is, is we didn't want to bring you a portfolio of projects that was concentrated in one area of the city. We tried to split it between the watersheds that were studied as best that we could. And then we also had some strategic selections when we were prioritizing these projects. So if, if an issue and a solution was primarily in a DOT right-of-way, we didn't select it. So we weren't going to fix issues on Bragton Boulevard or Bragton Road, that's DOT. That's DOT maintenance. We then also looked at what would be the greater benefit for the community. If we had an $8 million project that was a high priority, if we did not select that $8 million project and pick other projects, could we get more equal distribution of solutions throughout town? Could we resolve more flooding in the roadway? Could we impact more structures? So we looked at things like that. We also have been conducting in a parallel effort, closed-circuit television inspections of these concerned areas. So what does that mean? We're sticking a camera in the pipe. We're doing, we're trying to get an asset condition of what's in the ground. So if we noted any failing infrastructure in some of these concerned areas, we noted that and that might have bumped it up a little higher. We also tried to have what I'll call a one-dig mentality. So we looked at our resurfacing list over the next five years. The last thing we want to do is resurface a road and then turn around two years from now and dig it up and go storm pipe in. So all of that ran into kind of the, the selection strategies that we had. Here's a list of the nine projects that we're bringing forward to you tonight as proposed solution. And as you can see, eight of them were in what was classified as a high-ranked concern area. One was in a medium. And then you'll see the efficacies as well. A lot of them are 100%. I'll go in a little bit of detail about those lower ones. But we'll try to breeze through these projects as quickly as I can. So the first one I'll present to you is Tryon Drive. This is in the Little Cross Creek watershed. Our proposed estimate is $1.6 million. And I'll say for all nine projects, the solution is capacity expansion. So we're putting bigger pipe in the ground. That, that's what the target is for all these projects.
Okay. Okay, before you go any further, because that's one of my concerns to Tryon Drive. Explain to me, so the citizens can hear, what are you saying the improvement or the forecast improvement is? Because we get a lot of flooding in that, I know where the Little Creek is, yes.
So we've got the benefits on each life breach project, but specific for Tryon Drive, it is upsizing the infrastructure in the area. And what the, what the solution is going to do is going to reduce 425 linear feet of impacted lane length for 25-year level of service. We're also going to eliminate that traverse road crossing that's there at Swan Street, Swan and Pride. And then we're also eliminating seven disconnected structures for a 50-year event. So when a 50-year event comes now, there's disconnected structures, you can't get in and out. We're eliminating that, so that's what it's.
So Tryon Drive will be dug up?
Portions of it, yes.
And then the, the larger circumference pipes will be installed?
Correct.
What about, so do you, if I'm saying it correctly, do you female the other pipes that you are not? You know what, you know what I mean? If you're only going to retrofit some of the large pipes, what about the areas where the pipe is smaller? How you want to bring those together? What is that called?
You can add, you can do a tie-in, you just, you can put a structure. You have the smaller pipe coming in, you would construct a structure, like a large manhole, and you have the larger pipe going out.
Okay, and exactly where, exactly where that, will that be done? Because I normally have conversations about this.
Yeah, so there, there will be a lot of the infrastructure from Daisy through Swan down to Tryon. And then there'll probably be some channel modifications right here where that, that open channel is. And then you'll have, you've got an existing 60-inch pipe running from Tryon across Swan Street. That's actually some of the CCTV footage we have. That 60-inch infrastructure is beginning to fail. There's some separated joints and you can see the water protruding into the pipe when the camera was stuck in there. So that, that section would also be upsized as well. And let me speak for this and all the other ones. Another thing that was taken into consideration is the downstream impact. So what we're, what we, what we are not doing is fixing the problem here and sending it downstream. So when they were running these models, they made sure that there was no negative downstream impacts.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yes.
All right. All right, the next one, and this is the one Sheila showed you in the pilot study, is the Line Road and the Ivy Road Culvert. So these were two different concern, actually three different concern areas, but two proposed solutions. But just due to their proximity, we've recommended them together because of the high-ranked concern area. The Line Road project was 100% efficacy at around $3 million. The Ivy Road is upsizing the culvert that's existing there now, and that's around $300,000. And so what these two projects do is they reduce 2,700 linear feet of impacted lane length. They, eight disconnected structures. You then have that co-benefit of removing all the structures for, from a 10, 25, and 50-year storm event. And then the Ivy Road Culvert reduces 312 impacted lane length. And it also eliminates the traverse road crossing. Sesame Street, and this is in Cape Fear Two West. This has a lower efficacy than what we're, the other projects we've presented tonight at around 43%. This project is estimated around $3 million. But the benefits from this project, we still felt was a valid project as before because you're reducing over a mile of impacted lane length. The area here on Sesame Street, Montgomery Street, there's over 7,000 linear feet of impacted lane length currently. We're reducing 5,600 of that, so there's still a little bit of impacted lane length. However, on Sesame Street, you can look at the existing conditions. You've got up to two foot of water, a depth of up to two foot. In our proposed solution, that's around nine inches. So we've reduced two foot to nine inches. We've also had that co-benefit of removing all structures from the 10, 25, and all but one from a 50-year event. And when I talked about the negative downstream impacts, that's kind of a limiting factor here because like I said, you don't want to move the problem from one neighborhood to the next. You've also got some outlet control issues down here from an old sediment basin. We still felt as though this was a viable project due to the benefits to the community. Adam Street, another one in Cape Fear Two West, this one's downtown. The efficacy is ranging between 50 to 70%. We're still trying to nail that final efficacy down. That has to do with some phasing for some other projects. It's around $2.8 million. But we're reducing almost 2,800 linear foot of impacted lane length. We've eliminated traverse road crossing and we've removed, co-benefit again, of removing all impacted structures for a 2, 10, 25, and 50-year event. The next is Rosemary Drive. This is again on Little Cross Creek. This was a smaller project, the efficacy is around 100%. It's less than $1 million. And what this does is it reduces 511 linear feet of impacted lane length on a 25-year level of service. Remus Drive, which is in the Beaver Creek Three watershed. This is a $3.8 million project at 100% efficacy. That's reducing 2,700 linear foot of impacted lane length. And that could benefit of removing all impacted structures for 2, 10, 25, and 50-year event. And then the final project that is with this group is Rockford Drive in Beaver Creek Three. This is a larger project around $6.3 million, but it reduces 1,500 linear feet of impacted lane length. It eliminates traverse road crossings and it removes all structures from 2, 10, and 25-year events. So to kind of summarize how it's wrote down between the watershed, you know, we said we wanted a negative distribution as best we could. In the Little Cross Creek watershed, we have five proposed projects at $5.6 million. They address six high-concern areas. In Cape Fear Two, we have two proposed projects at $5 million that address two high-concern areas. And then in Beaver Creek Three, we have two proposed projects at $10.1 million that address one high and one medium concern area. So when we total all those up, we're a little over that $20 million target, but it's $20.7 million in present value. If you kind of use a cost escalation or inflation, if you, if you project that out five years to 2026, the cost of those projects are $23 million. So that's just there to say, it's not getting any cheaper to put stormwater infrastructure in the ground. And then Sheila had on the capstone the overall watershed benefits. These are specific to the nine projects that were presented to you tonight, the proposed solution benefit. We're eliminating 3.2 miles of impacted lane length. We're eliminating eight traverse road crossings from these neighborhoods. We've eliminated 15 disconnected structures. And it's, as that co-benefit as it pertains to impacted structures in a two-year event, we're removing five. In a 10-year event, we're removing 22 structures. In 25-year events, we're removing 31 structures. And in a 50-year event, we're removing 38 structures. And I'll turn to that.
Question?
Yes.
Wait. So I saw there District Two, District Four, District Six. And I know, I know these, some of the work, water studies that you're doing, watershed studies. Can you give me a, like a timeline of when work started, work finished? And what I'm thinking about is out west, because we have some serious problems out there. I know in my district, I can speak, that I, I know three areas in the community that flood all the time. So I'm, I'm just trying to get in my head around what, what, what you're doing. And you're doing a great job. All the information you've given is pointing us in the right direction for the future of the city when it comes to stormwater. But talk to me a little bit about how and when.
But talk to me a little bit about how and when are we looking at getting these projects complete? What the timeline look like? And when are we going to get to those other projects out west?
I think Sheila's the, the back end of the presentation covers the next steps on that.
All right, y'all step ahead of me.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, who, who's currently speaking at the podium?
Byron Reeves.
Mr. Reeves, thank you, Mr. Reeves, for the presentation, and Ms. Sheila Ambat. When we are looking, I want to go to slide 29, but I think it'll be 28. Well, on my iPad, it's showing 28. We, 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 a couple of months ago, we made an approval, and I think it was a variance for Adam Street. Will this take place before or after the, whatever's to be developed on Adam Street? That's my first question.
Yeah. So the, the stormwater variance that was granted to Adam Street, it is actually on the other side of the creek and in a different watershed. So that, yeah, that Adam Street, this, this does not discharge, this is not even in the same watershed. It's, Adam Street kind of gets split by Blunts Creek, and where the stormwater variance is, where the townhomes are going in, is on the other side of the, of the creek and won't be impacted by this.
Okay. So my, my, my second question, then a, then a statement as soon as I can get to it. I believe I saw Old Wilmington Road on here. I can't, what slide was that? I'm trying to flip through it and I'm not seeing.
That would be 28 for what we label as the Sesame Street project.
Okay, okay. So I was correct when I saw it. All right, I'm here. So this is a street that I grew up on and, and, and right where you see the big body of water, our house, when, when, when it's with flood rain, our house, it will flood. So thank you for this. What are the methods or how early will these residents start to get notice of this work that is to happen?
If, if, if council comes to consensus and tells us to move forward with this batch of projects, I would say we would hope to have surveyors out there this spring.
Okay. And then just a, just a statement, I remember last year when this, when we were, this was brought to us and to council member rights point, I, I was a little bit shocked that I did not see any form of representation for District Seven, because I think we were both dialoguing within the same meeting about these, these flooding issues. So I did want to have the same concern as to the flooding issues out west as well.
And I, I think we'll, we'll touch on that in the, the proposed schedule, moving forward with the other watershed studies on the, on the back end of this presentation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Reeves. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So today we have two council requests. The first is to request additional funding for the watershed study, and the second is consensus on the projects fire must provide. So what you hear, what you see here is the original plan we presented to council in January of 2020, and it was to study approximately 31 square miles for a budget of about 13.5 million dollars. When we presented to you that original plan, we didn't have firm numbers on how much these projects actually cost, or how much these watershed studies actually cost. And so what we have here is that, excuse me. And so what you can see is that now that we have true numbers or truer numbers, we have revised what we believe we can study with the 30.5 million, and that shows that we can only study about 20, 23 square miles with that same 30.5 million dollars. So today our request is to seek an additional 1 million, 1 million fiscal year 22 with the current stormwater balance, fund balance, and an additional one and a half million dollars will be asking, asking from you through the regular CRP process fiscal year 23. And that will allow us to meet the original scope that we had presented council in January of 2020. So the ask is the 1 million dollars with the fund balance today, and an additional one and a half million fiscal year 23 as part of the normal CIP process. And it will allow us to meet the original scope, which is all of the color that you see on this map. If we didn't do that, what you will see is that we can only study what is impacted, which really addresses some of the areas that, some of the watersheds that are coming post this first tranche that affects some of the other council districts on the west. And then the second ask is, what we need to date from you is simply a consensus on the project. We have the funds to begin the actual survey work. And as part of that, we'll begin design, we'll begin survey, spring of this year, of next year. We'll begin design in July of 2022, where we'll go through the CRP process and actually request design monies. We intend to come to you fiscal year 2024, July of 2023 specific, for the first, for the first tranche of bond projects. We intend to complete design by January of 24 and complete construction in January of 2026, and we expect to come with a second tranche of projects from a project perspective July of 2026. So the only ask today is to have council consensus on the actual projects for the Sweden project, the watersheds that we presented to you.
Sheila, do you have something? Question 41. During the presentation, I think Mr. Reeves said that DOT roads were not included in your calculations. When and how do we petition them to do it? Because if the flooding is coming on one of your roads, do we notify them if that's the case? Because we spend, you know, over 150 million dollars and a couple of streets may flood. Citizens don't really care if it's the state or the city. How do we get DOT to do that? Is that something that we need to be working with our delegation on or?
Absolutely. So what we are hoping to do is that because we have these studies, we've been proactive in developing them, we can engage in this conversation with DOT more aggressively. And so, for example, there is a Merkersen Road project right now. And so we already have done the study for the area. And so as DOT is developing solutions for its lane improvements and so on and so forth, we're going to engage in conversations with them based on our study results on increasing the capacity of the stormwater pipes. And if they, and with them, and if, as appropriate, we need to fund them to some extent, because we don't have to fund the entire project, there may be some cost savings in allowing, you know, in funding just the water stormwater component. So these studies allow us to do those co-benefits, and that's part of what we provided you, that tool, that big mapping tool. It allows us to begin to see those co-benefits across the city.
Okay. But we are coordinating with the state to make sure that they're taking care of their infrastructure that's within the city limits.
Absolutely. We certainly present the results of our studies. One of the things that the states does is that it won't accept our studies. It won't, I mean, it will, it will be our tool to engage in a conversation, but the state does its own H H monitoring.
I got that. And can you go back to the timeline? And the other question I had, so if I remember right, we've been working on watersheds a couple of times, listening audience. Previous councils had only funded one study at a time. I think it was 16 watersheds. So what I recall is that we want to do a master plan of, of some sort that incorporated all of it. But what you're bringing us today includes how many of the 16 watershed?
So what we have today is four. We're bringing you a fifth in March of 2022, which is in three months. So we would have done five.
Five of the 16?
And I have a timeline for the remaining.
Okay. Go back to the timeline on the work.
This is the timeline on the work, not on the studies.
Right. So my concern with this timeline stretching all the way out to FY 27 is inflation. Just like she said, project today, tomorrow costs more, 2027 is going to cost a lot more. Why is this taking so long according to your estimated timeline?
A typical project takes about a year and a half to two years to build. You know, from the time that you design it, from the time that you survey it, design it, you bid it, and you construct it, talking about on the average, three million dollar projects. Typical project takes about a year and a half to two years to develop.
Okay. So are we able to do a, a big hit of multiple projects or demonstrate to 2027? This 2027 shows a completion of all three of these, all four of the watersheds? Or this is just one?
This is just the funds, this is just the timeline to extend 20 million. Part of it is that, you know.
I'm not zeroing down on the money, because the money the council can with favorable rates, because really we lose money if we take 150, 50 million dollar work project and stretch it out to 2027. That's going to probably, that's going to probably be under 70 million. So if, if it's a positive decision to give you the resources, can a more aggressive timeline be obtained? That's my question.
And that's a great question, and that really speaks to staff resource capacity. We simply don't have the capacity to handle at an aggressive rate.
Is that something that can be outsourced?
We, we can outsource to a certain extent. What you find out is that whenever you outsource projects, you still have to have the manpower, the resources to manage the QA of those projects. And with the plethora of projects coming into all the consulting firms from the Infrastructure Act, you're going to have a lot of, in, in general, in broader terms, there's going to be checks and balances, there's going to be staff capacity to handle all of that throughput. And, and so there could be some help, but I would say that we want to be cautious.
Let me rephrase it in another way. With your current staff levels, that's the case. Is that right?
That's correct. If we could add additional staff, more qualified staff, we could.
Because, I mean, I know what you're saying, that you, that your plan is full of what you have, you know, if, if we figured the money out and figured the manpower out, I think the city benefits in the long run with this kind of, if, if four watersheds is 150, 60 million dollars, and you have 16 total, you're talking a billion dollars with inflation over a five, 10 year period. That, that's kind of the realities of it. So for us to beef up extra staff, to borrow or, or bond while rates are favorable, will save the city a significant amount of money if we plan to do it, because you have to do it, right? At some point, you have to address this problem, right?
What you have is many, numerous values are challenged with having several problems, and, and the question becomes really, what are your highest priority projects? And which are the ones that you really want to invest your funds in? And that's why we've gone through a rigorous process by which we understand what the problem is, what the efficacy is, and whether it becomes a high priority for the council. We have every project listed out to that number.
Councilor May.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Ambat, when, when I started to look at that timeline, something kind of questioned to me, that this is, I think you said, well, this is stretching out to 2027, 2026, 2027. And in the event, and I think, I think the mayor kind of asked this, but I just want to ask it my own way. When we look at her, say another hurricane to happen, and we're in the middle of this projects, right? What will then happen? Of course, I'm pretty sure the lake, and then it will probably cost more money, but does that reset the project with having to go back into study phase?
It's not. And I do want to continue to emphasize that the projects that we selected and the solutions will fix for the 10 year level of service or the 25 year level of service. We have a large event. These projects are not designed to handle those large events, unless we have stated it as such. And again, these are the final level projects. And so when we come into design, we'll be able to understand truly what the efficacies are. But in general, I want to make sure that this council understands that the solutions we've developed are to meet the levels of service, the minimum levels of service, which is typically 10 and 25. A large storm event is usually categorized as a 50 or 100. Our city roads are not equipped to handle large storm events. I'm going to touch upon those in a little bit, if you could, towards the end of the presentation, on some of the things that we're doing for resiliency for the larger events, and I'm going to touch upon that in a little bit. But I just wanted to make sure that this council understood these projects are to, to address the level, the minimum levels of service that the city has established, established, established.
Sheila, if I can, before we pivot, Sheila, the, if the resiliency is part of the, if your main ask tonight is an additional million dollars now to continue, and a million and a half for next, in the CRP, as well as to agree on the projects that you took.
Correct.
And then the resiliency piece, can we add that to you when you come back in January to talk about? Yes, can we add that then?
We can. I think that one of the council members had a question on timeline, which is two more slides. We can.
Okay. So, but I, I mean, I think for the ask tonight, and I did want to clarify, on your slide here, this represents work for 20 million dollars worth of project.
That's correct.
And so that leaves about 130 million dollars of other projects that you potentially identify, which are potentially unmet.
That's correct.
And for each of the four, or is it five different tranches that you're going to bring? Is it four?
For the watershed study?
Yes, is it four?
We've, we've got two more tranches coming in.
That, you know, so, you know, one of the questions that I know that the mayor and councilmen have asked about too, and this is a long-term question with Jay, and with budget too, is how do you fund that? And we've come up with some strategies for that, but I do know, because the hours went a little late, if, if, answer any questions that you have. But I know that if the two asks that you had were additional funding for now, as well as to approve us moving forward with the first grouping of projects to total funding. Councilmember May.
Mr. Mayor, I get that we want to ask money to do this and do that. I agree they should be to do this, do that. But I'm not cool with this timeline. All right, I'm not. And so I'm going to ask council to get together, figure out if we can ask somebody to celebrate this timeline, figure out where we can get funds from to get these projects done. Half the projects done, whatever it takes.
Or at least multiple designs at one time. Like, this is only a third of the whole package from this, or fifth of, of what you're looking at. So I'd hate to see the timeline for all of it. But Councilmember Kinsley?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You made a statement that I wanted to make sure I understood clearly. You said that the city streets are not able to, and then lost the last part of it.
Right. So our, our basic minimum standard for so, for design of storm events for our city streets as a new development comes on board is a 10 year event. So any city street that was built post 2009, generally speaking, is supposed to be, is supposed to handle a 10 year storm. And any street that was built prior to that, we do not know. And that's why we go through this reverse modeling process to understand the level of service for that street and the pipe systems. We try to understand it and try to get it to meet the minimum city standard, which is a 10 year level of service. Not anything greater unless it's some of those other areas where we showed in sad locations, we have 25 year level of service. If you're funding an emergency facility, it's 100 year level of service. So we try to achieve those high levels of service, but in general, our city streets are designed to handle a 10 year storm event post 2009.
That's typical. Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Kinsley, did you ask your question?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, all right. So certainly I know as we break this down tonight, understanding that there's an ask for you to do something, but if we, the council permits this ask to use the fund balance to do what we need to do, I would hope the council can allow staff to come back with some other proposals on this timeline. You know, Ms. Ambat, the other 130 million dollars that you're not showing a timeline for, are you able to at least do survey and design work for multiple parts of the other core fifths of that 150 at the same time? Even if you're not ready for shovels in the ground, can you send out bids for more designs than this 20 million? Or do you not have the capacity to get the engineering services for multiple projects at a time?
I think you then start the, we're into a revenue issue with the stormwater, the fund balance and the amount of revenue that we get from the stormwater bid.
What do you mean? To be paying for long, long circuits?
If you want to design more, we need more funds to solicit.
Right. So if that, that gets to the crux of my problem. It's like we're never going to solve this, because you're basing what you present to us on what today's reality is with staffing and money. So therefore, instead of the request in council, this is an option, if you want to accelerate this, it will take you to do this. We will need to hire two more people, or we will need to raise the fee $2, or whatever that is. But you got to give us some proposals, because I understand you're constrained by the reality of what you got, but. of what you got, but we can't make a policy decision if we don't know the options, you know what I'm saying? Like, what is a more aggressive timeline option look like financially and capacity-wise?
Well, Mayor, if you look at the schedule, as she said, these projects take time to design and pur.
Right.
So I don't know that there is a, a whole lot more that can be compressed on that, but we'll go back and look at it. That's just twenty million. This is one of the reasons that we were so interested in having a conversation tonight, and hate that we don't have a lot of time, but we'll program as much time as council wants for January. Mr. Dawkins has said on multiple occasions, this is the problem of the city. I, I won't, I'll mess that up. I think the only thing that surprises us all tonight is you got a hundred and fifty one million dollars of possible projects out of one grouping. It's not even a question, if y'all want us to accelerate it, we can. What is our stormwater fee now generated on the annual basis?
Seventy two dollars for a residential.
But what, also, how much is that?
It's a little over eleven million dollars.
So when you look at that, it's not just a model of accelerating twenty million, we can do that. It really has to be, as y'all had, uh, asked us last year, getting a real understanding of what's what, as well as the efficacy of how much you wanna put here, how much, because we're gonna come back to y'all for some more on roads, but we hear you. And so we'll be happy to come back with an accelerated schedule.
Here's the issue that we have. When we are trying to explain this to the public, okay? If they don't see any shovels in the ground, we've talked about studies for a long time, and I understood we were not doing as aggressive in the study section. But I would like to see what it looks like if you took this twenty million dollars worth of projects and another twenty million dollars of projects and put a timeline that if you did begin survey and design for both of those tracks simultaneously, right? Understanding that at the end of the design and the survey, you're gonna have to do a bond. So this right here is the option for how to fund twenty million dollars worth of something versus forty million dollars worth of something. You see what I mean? Because the, the inflation is gonna kill us with that. E- even though you're, you're saving, saving on the fee now, you're gonna feel on the back end because you still have to do it, and inflation is killing us. And this is the first time, probably in a generation, that you're gonna have a trillion dollars worth of infrastructure resources available.
Well, and Mayor, I wanna be clear with you about where staff is at, because I, there is no difference in what you're saying and what we wanna do.
Okay.
When I started here as your interim manager, the budget was stuck because y'all wouldn't raise the fee twenty five cents.
Right.
And now we're talking about adding a hundred and fifty one million dollars in one tranche of projects.
Right.
So y'all are singing, you're singing to us, and we're, we're ready to take the tune. If it's accelerating it, we'll do it, um, and we'll come back definitely with a funding model. Um, and then it becomes as, as it is the policy decision of council, how we bite off those various chunks. So absolutely, there's no, no just difference.
We're saying the same thing.
Yes.
You're saying this is the factor. Low interest rate, high inflation right now.
Got it, got it, got it.
That's a bad combination.
Yep. We've got it. And, um, if it, if we're able to come in and condense the schedule, and we will, on the twenty million dollars in projects to tighten it up and see what we can put at it, we will. And again, with the other hundred and thirty one million dollars, um, I think that some of the policy pieces that Byron and Sheila had, and again, this is a much longer conversation, is for you guys to also agree with the staff ranking, to say that efficacy goes lower above this line, the cost benefit ratio, the spread it among the, um, different districts, all of those things that came into your agenda packet. I think the CAM goes on for like six to seven pages that talks about how they ranked their, reranked their, reranked. This just was, it was a very rigorous study to come up with these projects, and, uh, but again, we hear you, we're excited, and the action that we need tonight is for council to agree to the grouping of the first tranche, accelerating them if we can, and come back with y'all on that, as well as authorizing us to put forward an additional million dollars from fund balance to continue the study, and then giving us the nod to put in one point five million dollars into the CIP for, that you'll be considering as part of the budget process moving forward.
All right. As the proposal has stated by the manager of council, so I have any other questions? Can we get a motion to do those things with the understanding that they will come back with some different options for a more aggressive?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, make that motion, that we do, um, abide with the, um, city managers' requests moving forward. If this timeline might be financed shortly, then we might see some work.
Again?
Okay, Mr. Councilor Wright, second. By Councilmember Enam, any discussion on the motion? All of them favor. All right, all right, those who voted for him, Dawkins, Dawkins, thanks in applause from Wright, Coleman, Eric, uh, Enam, and Kinsley.
I didn't vote, but my vote is green.
Yeah, I have a second coming to you. Thank you. Uh, those who voted for, Councilman David. All right, so look forward to that. Good work, guys. It's very complicated work, I'll say that.
And council, thank you. I really do mean that. The staff, um, thank you for the time, and, and we rushed it, but there's so much more here, so much more.
All right, uh, four point oh three, Mayor Green, uh, downtown design plan update, and...
Dr. Noon's gonna give us overview about the schedule.
And while, uh, while I'm giving it over you, Greg Harmon's gonna put up a PowerPoint we have been asked and will do as requested to give you a very brief, uh, point. So let me give you this main point for all of you to lean in and hear it, I know as we're transitioning. Simply asking you, are you ready to do administrative rezonings in the downtown that will implement portion of the downtown plan in the central campus? You've already said you want to do. That is what you're being asked in this presentation, in this work session. By the way, welcome to item number three on your eleven points of, uh, the meeting, um, to this, uh, four oh three. So that's what this request is. We have your downtown plan that currently has a downtown zoning, and if you remember the study talked about, you need to open up, have more uses, create some adjustments, push it out to some other areas. In order for us to do that, that's a lot of staff time, and we should not devote the staff time, we don't have a consultant, we don't have money in different places. If we're not ready to move forward with that, we need to know that so that I don't put the staff resources and allocation into this project. Mr. Harmon has that, but so that you hear upfront what really is being asked, that's what it is. So we have about six slides that we can talk through, or we can stop right there and see what your thoughts are.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add in one additional thing too, we have a companion presentation that is not on your agenda tonight that looks at rezoning around the universities.
That's correct.
And we, and instead of trying to bring that to you and ask for your approval, this is consistent with that, you've got a whole areas around the university which aren't zoned. And so unless you guys have some heartburn, we can hopefully get consensus for both of those that, because it all comes back to you before it will become effective.
Right.
But you wanna make, that's a part of his discussion tonight.
I just wanted to let you know that the only reason we're here tonight, sir, is just basically to get your concurrence to move forward. And, um, and, but primarily it's for the downtown, but I...
But we adopted the downtown urban plan that you...
Yes.
Yes.
But now we gotta talk to all these property owners and tell them that going from this to that may or may not have any impact on their business.
As you well know, your downtown is the heart of the city, and in a lot of ways, you have to make sure that you're working through a whole bunch of issues. There are competing issues that we have to work through. It's gonna be a, a challenge to work through those in the community meetings, we're gonna have you guys involved in it, but at the end of it, there'll have to be a public hearing in which you're talking about changing the zoning in place.
I appreciate that.
Text and match.
Add something that might be relevant to this conversation, uh, real quick.
Dr. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I've already made a motion, we're getting downtown plan, and we know you'd call it, we put out. I understand.
Excuse me.
Just one more. I'm coming, Councilor Enam. Let me come.
Gentlemen, if you all can make sure that I'm understanding, and, uh, because I'm, 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 I'm ready, I'm waiting for the, I don't have a problem with the presentation. But when we start looking at changing zonings, uh, if that's what you were saying, uh, within the university area, which, you know, the commercial ward, along that line, are we speaking that almost like when we first began in oh nine with the UDO, when we changed, hold on for a minute, just let me get it out, uh, when we change to the zonings or the letterings now for those zonings and like citizens, because you know, we had a big, you weren't here then, we had a big turnover where people were zoned this.
Right.
And they had to have representatives to come before us and say, okay, I was able to do commercial, but now the, the UDO came in, is this the conversation you're getting ready to have?
Conversation, uh, sir, that we're getting ready to have is to ask if we can move forward with what you as a council have said you wanna do, and that's make this downtown have more activity, which happens with a series of things. The one that is, uh, no money, relatively no money cost, but big, big impact, is one that adjusts the zonings. Right now, we have one zone of downtown. We would have two tiers, one that would be for the central area, and then a whole other area where we haven't done, dealt with that. So to your question of what happened in oh nine and even all the way through twelve, yes, there is the potential that people aren't going to like it, and I would also say there's gonna be probably about a ten to one, or a hundred to one, of people saying it's about time. But what's different that you're not used to, at least in the time that I've been here, is where the city has actually said, this is something that we are doing to implement our future and our plan. It matches your comprehensive plan, it matches your strategic plan, it matches the adaptive plans that you have in place, but in order to do that, there's a lot of staff work that half, has to happen. And will everybody be happy with an unknown document that doesn't yet exist? We never get that, but what we understand is from the council and from everybody else, is we've gotta make some adjustments to our zoning that doesn't allow for some of the flexibilities that we are trying to put in place for our downtown.
Now, I do feel you with that, and I understand what you're speaking of, but when we did something like this before, what we were just discussing.
Yes.
It really, um, caused a lot of confusion, and it also hurt some businesses or property owners.
Yeah.
Because they were zoned a particular way. I, I remember we had churches that their properties around on, on the corridor were zoned one particular way, and then the zoning changed when we went into the UDO, and we had churches and members, and we loaded that whole place up down at the old, um, at the chamber. So if we're headed that way now, where does the public get their input? When, when do we bring them in?
And I, and I think, I think that's a good, good, good point. Then you go to Councilor Enam. The difference between this and the UDO, the UDO increased restriction. What they're saying, they're gonna increase options to be able to do different things that currently can't be done, residential and so forth. So we adopted this, we've seen this presentation, right? You know, we'll, uh, look at it as, as much as you'd like to. I'll go to Councilmember Enam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to add, before I get ready to do what I initially planned to do, um, not only did we approve the downtown urban design plan, we approved the Murchison-Bragg Boulevard corridor plan, and we did that simultaneously, simultaneously because we knew that all this would kinda work hand in hand. With that, I would like to gather consensus motion to proceed with the implementation of the downtown urban design plan, including hold a community meeting and draft some or all of the proposed zoning amendments for required pub, public hearings.
All right, so as well, uh, consensus, is your second in that?
No, sir.
All right, so we've got a consensus, let me see if there's a second, proceed for, there's a second, that, second, by Councilmember Wright. All right, discussion, Councilman Mayor.
Okay, I'm, I'm aware of the discussion and how we got to, got here, but my concern, even then, and my concern now, and I did hear a part of the motion, is, uh, a public hearing of sorts for, uh, I guess letters will go out to all of our property owners, uh, that's in this, uh, uh, encompassed area, but I, I just still, I, I still have concern, and maybe I'm leaning still all the way back to oh nine when the UDO came in, so I still, but I do understand what, what came before us and how we got here.
Right.
And how I supported, that support got here, but I still have that concern here.
And you ought to. That's why we're bringing this in front of you. There's not, there's not, this isn't an easy rezoning where an African brings something through and we say, yeah, it matches up and easy to go. This is talking about our downtown. We have to be very careful on it, and again, you are, you are, I, I appreciate you talking about this, but this is something to be concerned about. Not in a negative way, but we can't just do what the state says has to be done, which is a public hearing. We need to involve the community throughout this process, and that's gonna, that involves a lot of staff time. Unlike the presentation you've heard before, where there's consultants and millions of dollars, that, and the staff that you regularly see at the podium that's involved in that process of happening. So we just wanna make sure before we, uh, move into what we consider our third quarter project beginning, that this is something that the city is committed to doing. You've said it in different ways, but before we start the process, uh, we want to make sure, recognizing that it is going to be a big win.
Then how are we gonna contact the citizens, the, the property owners?
Part of what we'll be looking through, but what we have already identified is there'll be community meetings, and, and when it comes, when it comes to the actual public hearing, there'll be a couple of different ways. I'm sure that through corporate communications, we're gonna have a series of ways, and not just the letters, but yes, letters too.
All right. All right, so there's the consensus motion on the floor, the second by Councilmember Wright, in private discussion. All right, council, I'll tee for your vote. Councilor Enam.
Green.
Those who voted in opposition, Councilmember Eric, motion carried. Um, well, well, I'm sure we have further discussion coming with this plan, uh, which we have seen, and, uh, as staff goes through the process, you'll, I'm sure you'll be back correct, Mr. Mayor.
That's, that's correct, and I think you'll find out that the, that we're gonna work with the downtown association, we're gonna be working with a lot of people so that they're aware of what's happening. The downtown and what happens to this downtown, I, I'm gonna just put it this way, what happens to the downtown in the next two years determines its next fifty. We have to be careful on how that, all these different things that are happening, all the money that we've been putting into the downtown, all the things that occur, that we're very careful on it, and that none of us think that we have a single bullet answer, a single way to figure it out. None of us do, it's a collective conversation that has to happen. And I also would add, I don't think that council will fully agree with every part of your own actions on it. We'll, we'll do our part to shepherd that through.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. All right, council, item four point oh four. Thank you.
Say man there, get some help.
The guy didn't come to work. Is this where I did?
He's on the day, he's got...
What is that? Fish right?
Yeah.
Thirty five.
Nah, working here, I'm old.
I'm old.
When you gone?
Is that pork on the face?
Huh?
Yeah, man. All my fingers out.
Are you working out there? Hey, all right. What you doing there, man? Oh, thank you, sir.
So basically, to cut to the case, Mayor, um, all of your projects are underway with the Cape Fear River Trail, I mean Cape Fear, uh, I mean with the Parks Recreation Bond projects, the one that is on hold, um, at the moment, we were to dedicate to come back to council to get approval to move forward was the design work for the Cape Fear River Park. And Michael and Rob Stone are here, um, to just tell you that, um, looking at this timing for the Parks Recreation Bond, um, Jay, when we have to expense the money and things like that, um, we just wanna go ahead and get concurrence from council to allow us to move forward with a design, and then coming back to council, of course, with that design for your approval and any project budgets that will be coming forth. But we, based on council's action, we can't move forward until council gives us the go ahead to do so. So we're here tonight seeking council's concurrence.
I'd like to make a consensus motion if the council is ready.
Uh, I don't think they're ready yet. But what's the update, uh, Mike, still getting your information? But what's the update, Mike, to get your information?
Hey, here we go, council, Mayor, council, thank y'all. Here's what you have. This is what we approved, the bond was, went forward. This is a conceptual drawing. It had not been fleshed out properly. The current budget is two point three million. What we're looking for council to do is give us the opportunity to go out and get an architect, to come back and flesh this design out, see what we can do with the existing budget and then move forward.
Okay, Mr. Gibson, so you're asked, there's two point three million budgeted for it. You're asking for different money for the design portion?
No, we want to take it out of that money right there.
Oh, okay.
Take it right out of that. And if you, if you look at this now, basically all you have is sort of like a flat surface. This is a trail going up under twenty four and connecting to the Cape Fear River Trail that goes behind the Botanical Garden. You have floating docks and just a big green space. Everybody knows this area floods, so the design would be the design. So if it did flood, you just clean it up, go back to what it used to be. But it gives people access to the river. This is basically twenty four, I mean a person straighter than that's twenty four out there. So and we just want to make sure that we can get somebody to flesh that out and come back with what that might cost with the existing budget.
All right, council, right. So is that project on the timeline that you show us with other projects? Is it on a timeline or is it just a separate?
No, council put that on hold. So we don't do, we haven't done anything with it because the council had it on hold. That's why we're coming back now to ask you to go ahead and let us do something with that project now with the existing budget.
So the fact that it floods, the only thing that you would have there, because once the water subsides, it won't harm the existing structures that you have there. So what activities are you looking at, you know?
That is basically this green space, you have a sort of like a little area where a couple of shelters that's down there now. You could probably put bathrooms up on the high side. This is, this is sort of race path street here. So you would just have big green space, same thing here, just access to the river where most riverfront parks. There are a couple of them, one in Greenville, one in South, I mean Charleston, South Carolina. There's another one in Columbia and they're just designed.
Okay, so you think that with that one point three, that would be enough to get you where you need to be?
That, that's two point three.
I'm sorry, two, two point three.
That number locked in.
That's a big difference, sir.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
What we going to do with the other one?
I'm sure y'all can figure that out.
Is that enough for, for you to get to where you need to be with that design?
Yeah, I mean, we won't, we won't use, I mean, we'll probably maybe, maybe three hundred thousand to a good design. You know, come back and say, we, we have confidence that we can get this done.
Okay.
With green space and, you know, just, just access to the river, basically with a riverfront park.
So we certainly want to put that back on the timelines.
Yes, sir. We just looking for that vote.
All right, Councilmember, welcome.
Thank you. Since it seemed like it may be a little extra money, maybe. I know. Okay, well, no, the reason I say that because I know because of the flood, we have to keep it green space. But is it feasible for us to do? I know I've been a little rough Arkansas and they have riverfront, they have, I don't know what you call it, but it's like station, workout stations. Like when you walking through the trail, you can do some lifts or do, you know, different things like that. Have we considered something like that?
Yes, ma'am, we have.
Okay. Okay, so that's something that can possibly be in a plan?
Oh, oh, yeah. That's definitely something we're, we would add that.
All right. All right, Councilmember Ingram.
You missed the mayor and thank you so much, Mr. Gibson. And thank you, council. I hope you are in support of my motion. I'd like to make a consensus motion that council accept the Cape Fear River Park concept so it can move to design phase.
All right, consensus motion to reignite the river park planning is second. Second by Councilmember Kinsley in discussion. All right, council, let me see if I can put you before you vote for that. Green. Councilmember Davis, are you voting for that? No. All right. All right, Councilmember Ingram.
Green.
All right, those voters opposed, Councilmember Davis, motion carries. So Gibson, we look forward to, when do you think you'll get something back for us tangible, for us to look at what the cost stands?
I would say probably easily sixty to ninety days.
A hundred and twenty days or more. Mike, we're not, we're not doing that. As soon as we can, we'll get you updated, but we got to put that out and we got to do this. Michael's up here for that answer. No, Rob, that's Rob's question. We're not, no, 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 there's no, no way you can get it in sixty days.
Somewhere between sixty and one twenty.
We'll get it to y'all as soon as we can, absolutely as soon as we can. Thank you, Mike. Could you get Rob, Ms. Rob?
Uh, oh, seriously, these, these, uh, Parks Recreation Bond projects have to be completed. They got to.
They are moving.
How come we can't get it in sixty days?
They are, they are moving and as we give you all the quarterly updates, they are moving, but I don't want to give you.
Hold on, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gibson, hold on. Why is it a hundred and twenty days, City Manager?
If you, well, Mr. Davis, if you got to put it out to bid for architects and engineers to come back and give you a plan, update the plan, all you have is one sheet. Then you've got to go out and have them do specifications and put it on the street, come back with some bids. That is easily more than sixty days.
Does it have to be a hundred and twenty?
I, I hedged my bets by saying it was going to be more than sixty. But we will get everything back to y'all as soon as we can, which is one of the reasons we wanted to bring it to y'all tonight is because it's been on hold for about a year. At council's request.
All right.
But I hear you, we're moving as fast as we can.
All right, thank you. Item four point five, business city ordinance.
And we hope to get the state general home down before the end of. Yeah, thank you.
Oh, okay. Mr. Mayor or members of city council, city manager. When I first came to Fayetteville Security Coordinator, I started to look for ways to make your, in particular, the city properties more safe and secure. Started to do a little research about what was available through legislation and what other municipalities and county governments. And then along the same lines with the state and the federal government of how they could, to make the properties more safe and secure. At this point, I worked with Chief Alvarez and we started with the idea of revising or to contemplate the idea of new city ordinance that essentially it's going to widen the scope of what's being prohibited that you have on that ordinance now, as well as widen this, the breadth of the ordinance and how it applies across all the city properties. At this point, I'd really like to, this is a summary sheet, so I'd be a good steward of your time. And this is essentially how the revision that I'm putting forward tonight would affect or the, what would be affected. Like I said earlier, we're going to change provisions from just a firearm to dangerous weapons or weapons. Extracted the definition we put forward in the revised ordinance for North Carolina general statutes, there are three statutes there. One that applies to more long lines of school property, but they're established legal definitions for the weapons, possession of explosive ordinance and defining what explosive ordinance actually is. Will consolidate eighteen seven into what is currently seventeen four, which will include a prohibition for not only concealed firearms, which is what you have now. But in the state of North Carolina, open carry is legal anywhere it's not specifically prohibited. So with this, we're going to be in a more inclusive group with weapons that will include concealed weapons, as well as open carry firearms, edged weapons with length longer than three and a half inches. So we don't get into the simple pocket knives and many people, I'm a North Carolinian by birth, carry by nature. As well as explosive ordinance or components of explosive ordinance. We've also included, like I said earlier, with the breadth, it includes all city facilities, not only the ones you own, the ones you lease or the ones you merely operate. It will apply across the board. It applies, what I would refer to it as a safety valve in that the city manager has the ability to permit any individual, case by case, to essentially that the ordinance won't apply to them. He can give them the permission to actually possess weapons on your property. And then now with the new ordinance, you're enforceable, be compliant. North Carolina just changed the law as far as penalties under state statute. And this ordinance will now be compliant with the new state statute. All right, Frank, there's a lot of information I put forward in the PowerPoint that I said I think each of you've got access to. If not, I'll certainly send it to you. I don't want to waste your time like I said, what is your time tonight? Because I know you're, you're busy. If you've got any questions, I'm certainly here to answer anything you'd like to talk about. I put forward the ordinances that Charlotte uses as well as Wilmington uses and Cumberland County uses. There's also information there about, it shows the streets that this could actually apply to that are your city streets, like Hay Street as opposed to the Department of Transportation, which could also apply there if you so desire. Then you have, there's samples of what the federal government does as well as the state of North Carolina is there in their prohibition of weapons possession. Yes, sir.
So concealed weapons, if you have concealed weapons permit.
Yes, sir.
What do you, can you define that or someone just carrying a concealed weapon without a permit?
It's hard to mention that circle because North Carolina, you know, just contemplate that in the last couple of years, that if you own the handgun legally, you can carry it any way you want to without a permit. Right now with a permit, you can carry it on private property as long as it's not marked like we would have to do. That's the only catch to this was you would have to use new signage on all your city properties to make people aware of the fact that it's essentially your property and you're not allowed in that. Otherwise, if you carry a weapon like you're talking about concealed without a permit, it's a misdemeanor in North Carolina.
With a permit.
If you have a permit, you, like I said, as long as the property is not, in this case, with the signage up, you can do that with a concealed carry permit in state of North Carolina. In some other states, I mean, I'm not sure reciprocity has gone to all fifty states, but I think it's getting closer to that.
All right, Councilmember Kinsley.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So in preparing for tonight, I'm trying to read through this, I want to make sure I understood something.
Yes, ma'am.
You said that if this, this is adopted, this will adopt onto the city property, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what about the parking debt? You're saying that you can't have your weapon in your vehicle? I just want to make sure that I have clarity of what you're asking first.
It's North Carolina law stands right now. If you're a concealed carry permit holder, state statute won't allow you or any other local government to change that. You'll, they'll have to have the ability to store the firearm in the car in a locked container. That's just the state statute. But that's only for people who have concealed carry permit holder. Otherwise, yes, ma'am, if that's your property, the ordinance will apply across the board. Now, that doesn't mean you have to enforce it like any other law or ordinance, if discretionary thing, you have the ability or the police department has the ability to enforce it. And law should be also the backbone. When we move forward, we're trying to move forward to start a security screening process within City Hall and that would be the backbone for the actual screen is the fact that you don't allow firearms in the building unless it's been permitted by the city manager.
All right, council, any other questions? All right, so I guess you need a consensus. Well, we've got to vote on this to make it real.
Yes, sir.
At the next council meeting, what do you need from us?
If you're interested in it, we would move it to the meeting. If you want to consider it and have staff come back and present, give you additional information. But essentially it is, as he said, it will put us in line with Charlotte, Cumberland County and Wilmington's ordinances as well.
I might reply on the same ground if it's unnecessary. I think you understand it. So council, any questions about what is presented? If I understand it right, this does not include city streets. You said that's.
Look, if the city, the streets, as I understand the law, the streets that you own, like as in Hay Street, it will apply to if you so desire.
But that's not the proposal.
Streets are on a streets maintained.
That's not the proposal that staff has put forward.
Okay, so that's my question.
So he was saying.
You could add that, but if we agree to this.
That's not what I'm suggesting.
That's what you should do.
I'm just suggesting, I just don't understand the law.
Yeah, right, I understand that. I'm just trying to make sure what we're looking at.
Do you think right now the properties themselves, not necessarily the streets, or where you want to make more safe and secure for not only your employees, but the citizens of Fayetteville that frequent those areas?
Yep, got you. All right, council, any other questions? Councilmember Kinsley.
Mayor, I guess my concern is with the, my understanding, like you said, my understanding of the law. I just, I don't feel like I have enough information at this point to, to really make a decision on this one.
What, what questions do you have that we can try to ask of Councilmember Gibson?
So you were saying that if, that we could include Hay Street, for example, that's.
That's not our proposal.
That's not the proposal, okay.
The proposal is for the city building. So City Hall.
Okay.
Direct centers, which state law already addresses direct centers. But trying to be consistent with all of our city owned facilities or the ones that we lease out to other entities. So that would be like the Fascinate You Museum.
Okay.
The baseball stadium, trying to, those are probably the two that come to mind the quickest.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, yes, thank you. Where we are right here, yes, thank you, Mayor.
So the question is, that would include all city employees, including city council members?
Well, let's, let's go back because you, we made some apples and oranges. The city already has policies that pertain to city employees. And city employees cannot bring weapons onto city property. They must have it if they have weapons, they must be locked and secured in their vehicle. What we are now trying to do is expand this for our facility for visitors coming to our buildings. So citizens that come to City Hall, they come to the transit center, the recreation center, this would apply to them.
Question is some, well, not quite pertaining to this, but where are we? Because I know in the past we talked about having metal detectors in our facility. What's the status?
That's, that is part of this, excuse me. This proposal goes hand in hand with the adoption of the metal detectors, which we plan to implement when City Hall, the first floor is completed and visitors begin returning to the building.
Yes, ma'am, the first set of, there's an X-ray machine, walk through metal detector, handheld metal detectors are being held right now by the vendor. The P O has been issued. We're just waiting for the City Hall to be in a position to put those back in place.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, council, any other questions? All right. It's a handful consensus to move this forward, part of the overall strategy for, all right. Councilmember Ingram.
Green.
All right, sir, thanks. Thank you, Rob.
Yes, sir.
All right, Councilmember Clark, if you can, yeah, five minute timer on.
Um, okay. Um, go ahead and mute because he's staying five minutes break. Is that what I just heard?
Five, five minutes here.
My brain is not working anymore. Yes, I am totally okay with, no. Okay.
Twinkle, twinkle.
Okay.
All right, council member request, item four point oh six, is council member request by, who is this? It's Kinsley, refurbished city buses for mobile showers.
So council, the reason why I brought this one is with the new buses that we received, there was a question of what happens with the old buses. One of the things that I thought about is maybe doing a partnership with F T C C, with their plumbing department, their electrical department in partnership with Man of Church or maybe the Dream Center. We did have recently where they did show that they did have a mobile shower, it's like it may have accommodated too. But that would also give the students an opportunity to be able to use their skills and there's what they've learned in order to convert it. Then also be able to present that back to the community to use with our homeless committee, our homeless community and also for the organization that is utilizing those services. To not only be. To not only be stationary in one area, but be able to be moved. So that is my council request for consideration.
Okay, uh, so the request to ask for consensus for staff to look at the refurbishments of older, uh, city buses and accommodate showers.
All right. Say eight, just city bus.
Yes.
One bus.
Yeah, so there is a.
I mean, there's examples of what the, of the city.
Okay, with their buster. All right, any questions?
So these buses will still be mobile?
Yes.
And they will go in different locations?
Yes, sir.
Where citizens could, uh, or homeless or whoever, citizens period, could they come on and take a night shower?
Yes, and they would be implemented also like during a storm or some, you know. But that's, that's the purpose of the bus, the mobile bus for showers.
Okay, all right, council member.
Will we have legal covering for liability in terms of if I get hurt, raped or something bad, see if that happens on one of these buses owned by the city? Or they may be to sign some paper waivers or something?
Well, I think that the first one was we'll be doing like a proof of concept. Uh, where, um, Councilmember Kinston actually had, I think he said, an example. And so we'll take a look at that. But also do a cost benefit analysis and bring that back to council too. It may be that, um, the mobile showers may be a better way to, a cheaper way to get it done. But I think the interest is to see about mobile showers potentially using a bus. But we'll do our research on that and come back with, if that would work. As depending on how we bought our buses with grants and stuff, they may have a disposal process. But we would take a look at mobile showers using buses first, but also look as if there was a, a more economical way, uh, to achieve the same goal. If that does not pan out, if that's the council.
Whenever it comes, whenever it comes down to, uh, refilling the buses with water, uh, you are going to bring that back to us soon?
We, yes, sir, we, we'll do the research on it and we would, um, uh, take a look if, I think the idea is, is, is to have showers available for people who need it. And, um, there are a couple of things that are in play already. One is Salvation Army has their facility, the Dream Center, uh, not Dream Center, the Hope Center is open with Manor Church. And the Day Resource Center as well that you have will also have, um, uh, showers available. I think the issue is mobile showers and we will take a look to see whether or not this is, uh, proof of concept. If this works for us, how we might make it work, but also then do a cost benefit analysis to see if there may be a better way to do mobile showers.
And also in the study, uh, where you're bringing it back about the location where they would be periodically? Because I'm pretty sure you're not just thinking that it's, it's going to be in one location.
All right, any other questions? All right, council, uh, I ask for consensus with that.
Yeah, that's good.
All right. Okay. All right, Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kinston. Uh, item 4.07, Councilmember Donald.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to thank, uh, city attorney, uh, the audit committee, uh, made a request, uh, for a discussion on, on an investigation. And I, um, asked the city attorney to ask the school of government. And, uh, they said that, um, that that was, uh, not in, in their purview. So I, uh, have reviewed the internal audit charter. And it appears that the audit committee over possibly does not have that in their purview either. So, um, uh, my guidance is, uh, that, um, since school of government has reviewed it and they said they don't want to have any, uh, comment upon it. And it's really not in the audit committee charter. Uh, it's an item that, uh, I don't believe we need to move forward on.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Donald. Any other questions about that? Councilmember Kinston.
Yes, I do have one question or clarification on this one. Mayor, I know, um, actually it wasn't on the audit committee, it's council member Dawkins and myself, but it wasn't us that actually initially brought up the conversation. But the conversation itself was based around any misconduct or anything that may have been done with a city employee. So my question is if we're not bringing it up through, um, through this avenue, would it go through ethics or what is the next?
Uh, there, it, so.
Because that, that is what the audit committee. I'm sorry?
You said this was pertaining to a city employee or elected official?
Well, it was based, the way that the conversation occurred, um, the other two members of the audit committee had concerns with the resignation of Councilmember Boadell. One of the, one of the items was based on a city employee, uh, action that the city employee did. So being that in the audit committee, it does talk, if there's a, a request or anything of any, any waste or, um, anything inappropriate, then it does go through the audit committee. Well, it, I, we don't know because it hasn't been investigated. So that's what I'm saying. That, but it wasn't brought by us. It was brought by the other two members of the audit committee. Um, I didn't know if they were calling in or anything, but that's just to give you a basis of where it came from.
All right, Councilmember Ingram.
So what, okay, Councilmember Dawkins. What, first let me ask, are the appointment committee, I mean, sorry, the audit and finance committee members here to speak?
Uh, Councilmember Kinston.
So, no, I think I'm talking about the community members who were, from my understanding, I thought that there were some audit and finance community members, appointees that were coming to, to speak about this item?
No.
Councilmember.
That's not really in the purview of this particular meeting. Um, and then I had mentioned to them, since it's not really in the purview, maybe they can come to the public forum and express their concerns, which would be next Monday night if they sign up, yes.
So then my follow-up question is, what would make it not in purview for board and commission, um, board and commission members to come and speak to the council? Because I know that, that, that happens quite, quite fre- frequently.
I didn't hear you say.
I said, what, what would make it not be in the council's purview? I mean, for, for the purview for board and commission members to not speak? Because I know this, this happens frequently where members do come and speak to the council. There are envoys and commissions on behalf of the board and commission.
Not the purview of the audit committee from, based on the research I've done. But they are welcome to bring up that item in a public forum.
Oh, okay, so what will be the next steps to the concerns that were raised? From the audit and finance committee?
It wouldn't be anything from the audit committee because it's not in that purview, Councilmember, um, Ingram.
Okay, thank you.
All right, no questions.
All right, so, thank you. Uh, item 4.08, uh, policy on elected officials attendance, I think this is, Councilmember Davis.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I was asking council, this is an appetite request that we, as city attorney, this appetite for, we create a policy. City attorney give us guardrails, legal guardrails as to what we can put in place, uh, in terms of attending meetings and simply communicating. When we can't attend meetings and, 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 and for what reasons? Uh, we are, uh, employees of the city. And as employees of the city elected by the people, I think that it's not unreasonable for us to be held accountable to do the business of the, the people in the city of Fayetteville, um, in a way that allows them to, um, have full access to us. Um, you know, um, I think there's something to be said for that. I think the city attorney can say if it's legal or not. Um, and I'm asking that council, make that a policy, that, that, that we see what structure can put into a policy for us to be accountable to our responsibilities as elected officials to be in our place of business. Um, unless, you know, some of us are traveling, traveling vacation, we're humans. But even when I do travel, I still let city manager know and let you know, let the clerk know, I'm not going to be here, blah, blah, blah. Um, but I think we're, you know, we're the place, you know, we just give our city employees a bonus for doing their homework on the front lines. Police officers can't leave from their house, firefighters can't put out fires from the station. So I think we as elected officials, we should be in our place of business unless we've got something that's real significant and quantifiable. Other than I don't feel like being out tonight, so let me sit home and do this at home.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Davis, and I, I'll weigh in a bit. There, there was an understanding, um, amongst the council since, since I've been here that you had certain etiquette that you couldn't attend to be called or you make provision to call in. And with technology and, and pandemic came zone, which gave technology an extra boost to do it like that. But as it was brought up during, um, the meeting before, I mean, you know, one of the things that I think everybody in the public is expecting of us to return, uh, to professionalism in, 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 in work environment. And I understand that things happen, but typically to let the clerk know, so that you can attend. Went out there to, to weigh in on what the reasons are. But I think it just makes it easier when we're here together to do certain things. We've done a lot remotely, but as companies open back up and, and people are, are going back, uh, to try to function with the, the parameters of pandemic, it's tough to run these meetings with not everybody present. You know, we don't hear each other, communication is bad, wifi connectivity and so on and so forth. So I certainly would support structure around that, um, since, you know, when this was brought up before. Uh, one of the basis was that there was nothing formal. And I think you're asked to put some structure in it. So the future councils are not dealing with that. I, I do support that.
Is that it, sir? Well, so if there's consensus to do that, show hand, we.
Is that end of discussion or?
Well, it's just consensus because it's just a question.
I see you.
Yeah, you have a question?
Okay, I, I guess my question is if that was to go into place, um, and we have council members who not show up, then what's the result? I mean, what, what's the plan?
What they used to do before is, what they used to do before is they would track our attendance. Okay, and, and, and then, well, and they gave us grades on the attendance. Because right now, that was having to, to, they were used to participate more with. On, on, on a Zoom and you may or may not get the link or, or ask it to five minutes before a meeting. So we used to get a scorecard on attendance.
They do, you say.
Yeah, yeah, it's great.
We might need to put that in place. I mean, I mean, if other municipal bodies and legislative bodies are doing that, I'm open to that also. And I remember coming to council meetings for two years before I decided to run for council. And men came to council meetings with cancer, sick to do their job for the citizens. You know, this isn't, you know, we're in COVID, I, I understand it, but, but the people's business is important. This is a job we get paid to do. We're elected by people to do this job. If there's something you're doing in vacation, this is not about control, but this, this is about what this, this body is supposed to be conducting.
No, and I, and what I'm saying is I understand that, but at the same time, we also have council members that travel a lot. Who, I mean, are we, we want all the way across the border from council members that are zoning in, but also council member that traveled out of town. We have some council member, I know they traveled several times.
Well, you have to do, what you're saying, the policy would say that you, there's a process when you're not going to be here.
Does somebody know, get to Zoom or whatever, you know, I mean, you know, it's, I mean, it's, it really should be a good faith. You know, that, that, you know, because for COVID, no one had a reason to not come to council meetings. And, and I mean, we're, you know, that's, we really shouldn't have even.
Have this conversation.
I'd be, to be tough, if I just be.
We really don't should even have.
We shouldn't have to.
Councilmember Ingram, you have about thirty seconds. Councilmember Ingram.
You, can you, uh, can I, I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. So the concern is to let.
That's the reason right there.
All right, so we're fifty-six over, so I think it was a consensus and that, that comes back and city attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, item 4.09.
Whoa, my question didn't get answered.
We, we didn't hear you.
Okay, so what I'm asking is, it, the, the, it's okay. My, my vote is red.
Okay, all right.
Uh, item 4.09, uh, camera corridors, uh, council, this is something that we've, uh, we've talked about it for some time. Uh, as we're looking to, uh, to make the city safer, lots of new technology initiatives. So, um, we've asked for cameras on the corridors. I think there was four or five that were added. I'm bringing this back so that we can give some policy direction to manager. Uh, if, if council supports it to accelerate this, or at least to report this back to us, so that we're tracking this initiative. This is something that's at least two, three years old. Recently, we put up eighty-plus cameras under, under the netlock, uh, administration over there. There was some technical hiccup and, you know, it's been four years. And so I think it's time that, uh, citizens get this safety that they need. And, uh, I'm asking for some support to push for the cameras to be put up in a, in a real way. Been asking for it on the part of Jackson Merterson for the last four years, you know.
I mean, what area? Not red light cameras.
Yeah, no, not red light camera. This is a, a neighborhood, a neighborhood's camera that the city have. FPD can have that will help deal with some of these things when we, especially when we roll out these gunshot tactics or whatever. Uh, some of the areas that, that, that citizens are still under siege, you know.
I second it, Mayor. Yeah, question, Councilmember?
Uh, with those cameras, are we able to relocate them throughout the city?
Well, what the previous system was, was that we set eighty-something up on the poles throughout the city. And then the role was to add and add and add. There's been no adding, not in a real way. So that's what I'm bringing back. So I don't think it's a mobile camera. It's, it's attached to, to, to.
And a part of that is, Mr. Mayor, from, add to that, some businesses have cameras. And I think the police department have the ability, if they will allow the police department, to tap into their cameras and they can view as well from that business along with, you know, these, uh, additional cameras. And once people know that there's a system in place where they can be seen, I think that will reduce crime in a big way. Just for them knowing, okay, you've been watched.
So that's the ask is to, uh, ask managers to come back with this thirty days, uh, tell us where we are.
I can do that now, Mayor, if you'd like. We have a hundred and seventeen up and we are working to try to put up another twenty. But I will be happy to have the chief come in and do a PowerPoint, uh, to show you the locations. And it's, um, and we would definitely appreciate any additional funding council could add to this, once we give you an update.
Okay, all right. What was that program that they had, uh, companies that would volunteer businesses for the, for the, uh, police department to have access to there?
Yes, sir, that was part of the, I think, eight hundred thousand dollars, seven eighty that council put forward. Was for us to, uh, be able to create, uh, or log onto a system whereby people could give us their camera feeds from everything, as ring doorbells to security cameras around the house. And, um, that is also underway. But, um, we definitely can come back as, um, as quickly as we can, Mayor. We'll give y'all a update on where we are and what the next steps would be. But again, y'all's continued support of this would be most appreciated, most appreciated.
All right, thank you. I think I have the time, so thank you all.
Councilman, item 4.0, uh, oh, one, oh. Uh, council, you all are familiar with, uh, you know, Red Hat Outdoor Theater in Raleigh. Uh, Wilmington just built the outdoor amphitheater, very, very successful. And then these are drivers of, of economics with due entertainment in these, in these cities downtowns. We have a beautiful festival park over there. Uh, I don't think it would get enough full potential out of it. So there's a conversation that we had with, um, previously the folks at Global Spectrum to ask them to assess it. They, they told us that they have a number of cities that they handle coliseums like they're doing. And during, uh, other months when they're not doing coliseums, they're doing, using the outdoor facility. So they, they gave us some ideas and thoughts, but it's got, it's, it's at the point now where I wanted to bring it to council if that's of interest that they could do it, because they said we are missing a tremendous amount of programming opportunity, uh, for that with some very minor tweaks. I think we could, we could do it. The other thing is, uh,
The other thing is, uh, Bianca Cool Springs said that would be a huge lift for them and what they're trying to do with bringing, uh, arts and entertainment district online. So, um, this is just, uh, something to ask the manager, give him permission to get more information and bring it back to council, uh, to see what that looks like. You have a question, Councilman, next one?
Yeah, just to be clear, so that, because I'm not. So they go by a great entertainment service, see?
Yeah, what they do in, in these other places, Live Nation manages, uh, I think Wilmington and Raleigh. And, and they bring, but Global Spectrum manages the Crown, so they bring acts. But they have outdoor opportunities in the summer and springtime. And he said it's really a useful time to flip our weather situation, that park could really be, you know, generate a revenue generator and it would be managed by, and what it does too, it takes us out of the middle of things that happen when people are trying to do things there, you know. Few, few years ago, there was folks wanting to do a, a jazz festival and we were getting calls, uh, you know, I think a hundred black men or something, PJ, uh, you know, we're getting calls to make a, a policy decision or something like that when you have a management firm that, there's a process and it takes us, takes the policies out.
Uh, councilman, right?
Yeah, ma'am, I think it's an excellent idea. Um, as I travel around the country and going to different places and cities, I see entertainment, live entertainment all the time where people can go and do things on the weekend. Just a place to go to, uh, to have enjoyment with your family and things like that. Uh, just like, uh, at, on Thursday night after work, you know, on a, uh, on a Tuesday night. Something going on all the time. And for that to be taken from our hands, we're not responsible for that, but we have ongoing activities, especially in the downtown area as well, uh, I think that's, I think that's, that'd be the way to win.
Uh, uh, that would be great and maybe the manager can come back with it and, you know, do an RFI or something and say who's interested and take a look at it. Um, if there's a consensus, council, I'd ask for our answer to that. Great, all right, Councilman Kinston.
Great.
Councilmember Ingram.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you, council. All right, item four point oh one one, it's Councilmember Ingram, uh, community watch.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. First, um, I am interested, I mean, I'm interested in seeing how the city can work to help community watches establish and or reestablish their community watches citywide. Um, while we are having heavy discussions on public safety, I think it's imperative, um, to remember the aspect of the community watches. And some of my interests are to, um, running a, uh, maybe social media campaign, grassroots, uh, campaign to get them involved. Um, uh, or incentivize their involvement within their community watches. Um, so that is my, uh, first ask. And then my second ask is, um, I have an interest in, in to create a, um, mini grant program that will specifically, um, support grassroots nonprofits that host mentoring programs and on the ground efforts to work with youth and our families. Um, this program should be.
Councilman Ingram, was that, I don't see that request, only here to second, watching what you're talking about.
It's all in my, it's all, it's all in there. Um, I'm reading directly from it. Um, so this program should be where they can go and simply apply for this mini grant to support their, their community efforts that directly relate to crime prevention. And so what, and what I'm asking is to ask staff to look at what this rubric would look like and if this is, this is doable within the city's purview.
All right, so, um, this is what I have to throw from down, I, I missed, I was on my track with the community watch piece, but.
I was at the community watch.
All right, so most of the consensus on community watch, yes, all right, so there'll be more information on that. Yeah. Second one was, uh, I think it's about meaning and range.
So, so. So before you, before you is a, I had staff print it out and put it in the cam. The Arts Council established a mini grant program to directly support art, local artists in the community. And the idea is to take the similar program, but to allow nonprofits, grassroots nonprofits that do the direct work with working to, working with, uh, youth and families to where they can apply for, you know, small mini grants, um, that are crime prevention related.
Yes, uh, listen, uh, just to respond on that, uh, I think that's a great idea. But I think you need to, um, put that in as another council request. And that way we can have time to really discuss that because it's not there. And then we probably could bring that, you know, back to workshop or something of that nature. I think what you're saying is a good idea, I think it is possible that can really help the community, but you don't have that on the agenda as a discussion tonight.
Um, Miss Air. Miss Air, it's in the agenda. I'm sorry, but it is, it's.
Still have the floor, uh, Councilman Ingram, you have about a minute and thirty. All right, so go ahead, Councilmember, uh, Ingram, and then, did you have your hand in?
My council member request is, it's all in the, in, 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 it's in there. I don't know what y'all are reading, but it's in there.
Yes, and.
All right, Councilman.
Um, yes, I supported counseling, but I was gonna also add, um, worse, why I guess it's sure, um, it's sure you're taking a consensus that we can, um, incorporate our recreation centers. Like you know, we have some organizations that, uh, that work within our recreation center.
Absolutely, and that, what this, what this is for staff to come back and show us what this will look like.
So there's consensus for that, has spoken, consensus. What was that? All right, all right, uh, all right, council, uh, you have an announcement real quick?
Just a quick announcement, uh, for those of you that know that our mighty Wolverines, uh, won their division here in town.
Excuse me?
Went all the way to the, uh, third, went all the way to the third playoff and lost that third playoff game. So on, uh, it, it's, it appears that it's going to be December the seventeenth, the last day of school, uh, early in the day, we are going to, I've been getting it together with the, uh, the, uh, principal and the athletic director. I wanted to give them some titians and some city horns. So that's what me and the mayor were signing tonight. I invite the council, of course, I've got the mayor on schedule, to come also and shake hands and say, uh, good luck. Make a motion to adjourn, mayor.
No, sir, I, I didn't hear the consensus to my second part of my, of my.
It wasn't my councilman, they took the vote, it was two, it was two out of the six.
This is the most corrupt passport I've ever served on.